Hello, everyone, and welcome to the December 9th, 2025 meeting of the City of Westminster Planning Commission. If anyone wishes to speak and has not yet done so, please sign up in the back of the room. On the table there, we have a sign-up sheet. Okay, can the secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Tomacek?
Excused.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Colling? Commissioner Mayo?
Here.
Chair Bosher?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Commissioner Young?
Excused.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Here.
Commissioner Peg?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, and the first alternate, Commissioner Kinnear, will be voting tonight. All right, can we...
As well.
Sir?
The second alternate will also be...
Oh.
Both of them.
Okay, excuse me, both alternates will be voting tonight, thank you. With that in mind, can we get a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for November 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I believe this is a voice vote. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, on tonight's agenda, we have two hearings. Item 3A, public hearing in consideration of special use permit for the tattoo body piercing parlor within the My Salon Suite. And item 3B, public hearing and recommendation for the third amended preliminary development plan for Interchange Business Center filing number one. I hereby open the hearing for item 3A, and it looks like we have Mr. Harlow for a presentation tonight.
Can we turn it on? I've never used it up here before. Is it on?
It's on.
Oh, okay, it wasn't glowing. I thought I got a glow, okay. All right, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Trevor Harlow, and I am a senior planner with the city's planning division. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 1,788 property owners, tenants, and HOAs within 1,000 feet of the property under consideration tonight. Two public notification signs were posted on the subject property, and the city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. As you may have noticed, this item is familiar. The current business received a special use permit, or an SUP, from the Commission for a Tattoo/Body Piercing Parlor back in March of this year. The current owner is selling the business, and as you know, an SUP follows the owner and not the land. This requires a new SUP for the new owner. Given this, some of the content I'll cover here will be very similar to what was covered in March, so just bear with me on that. Moving on, on the screen here, this is a map showing the tenant space of the proposed use, which is in the West Glen subdivision. Legally platted has Lot 1D, second replat, West Glen subdivision filing two. The site is generally located at the northeast corner of West 88th Avenue and Wadsworth Parkway. The image on the left is from Sheet 6 of the official development plan, or ODP, for this development, recorded in 1999. The review and approval of this plan considered site planning for commercial and retail uses, which accounted for usage, uses such as the proposed Tattoo/Body Piercing Parlor. The ODP considered site planning elements, including but not limited to parking, vehicular and pedestrian circulation, landscaping, loading, delivery, trash collection, lighting, emergency access, and building design. The image on the right highlights the current dedicated space within the pre-established tenant spaces that are part of My Salon Suite's business model. The space is central to the building, and is not visible to public view from the exterior of the building. The applicant's representative and the current business owner, Tracy, of My Salon Suite is here tonight, along with the new owner, Paul. They'll be able to speak further to this business model and My Salon Suite in general, so I'll leave that to them. Moving on, under the City of Westminster's code, a Tattoo/Body Piercing Parlor may be permitted with an SUP. You may view the definition for Body/Tattoo Parlor here on the screen. By granting approval of the SUP before you, the planning commission grants the allowance for this land use only to the future business owner for My Salon Suite at this specific location, like I mentioned previously. The allowance, it does not run with the land, and it may not be transferred to others, and will expire if abandoned for a year or more. All right, when staff evaluates an SUP application, nine criteria are considered. The first four criteria are shown on this slide before you. Staff found that the use proposed with this application is well-suited to the area and has shown to be like operations in the surrounding location. The visual concerns associated with the proposed use are mitigated properly by the operation being centrally located within the building and not being visible to public view. Outdoor activity would be limited to the typical vehicle and pedestrian traffic already associated with the site and with its current operation. All right, the final five criteria are displayed here. Staff found that the proposed use, that is an existing use at this site currently, of My Salon Suite, is consistent with the surrounding uses. Once again, no outdoor storage. Deliveries and waste disposal are away from high-traffic public areas and accounted for within the My Salon Suite operations. Parking, traffic, vehicular, pedestrian circulation have been reviewed, reviewed and approved within the official development plan for this phase of the development back in 1999. The proposed use is in line with demands and considerations, reviewed as part of that plan's approval. In addition to the nine approved criteria, nine approval criteria, there are five standards that must be considered when reviewing an SUP application, the first two of which are shown here on the screen. Staff finds that the proposed use within My Salon Suite is reasonably compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed use is not in conflict with the policies of the comprehensive plan either. The final three standards are shown on this slide. Tattoo/Body Piercing Parlors are limited to one operation within a thousand-foot radius. Staff has found that there are no other licensed Tattoo/Body Piercing Parlors within this radius within the city of Westminster. In addition, the applicant has confirmed the closest Tattoo Parlors inside of Westminster's jurisdiction are beyond the 1,000-foot radius of the site, being .7 miles away. There is one Tattoo Parlor located outside of Westminster, within the city of Arvada, that is located approximately .5 miles from the site. The other distance limitation for the standard are for other uses and not applicable for this application, and the standards for four and five are also not applicable to this type of application as well. All right, staff recommends the holding of tonight's public hearing and granting approval of this SUP by the complaining mission as detailed in the agenda memo. And then again, for city strategic plan priorities, approval of the proposed SUP helps to promote and support and continue to support a resilient economy that attracts and retains a diversity of businesses, workers, and industries, expands living wages, living wage jobs, and diversifies the city tax base by providing and sustaining economic opportunities and by bringing new services to the community. The proposed application meets the standards and guidelines of the Westminster Municipal Code and other applicable requirements. The applicant is with us tonight, as I mentioned, and they have a presentation to share with you as well. So this will conclude the staff's presentation, thank you for your attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Colling, did you have a question? No? Okay, thank you. Anyone else with a question? Very good, we can go ahead and take the applicant's presentation, thank you.
My name is Tracy Ulmer. I'm the current owner of My Salon Suite at 88th and Wadsworth, and I'm here with Paul Bossinger, who will be the new owner once the sale goes through. So to give you a little bit of background about the business, and again, this is very similar to what I presented in March. My Salon Suite of Westminster opened in February of 2018. We have 30 suites there, they're equipped for any business in the beauty industry, and each suite can be customized for hair or non-hair businesses in the beauty industry. Our suite renters pay rent weekly, and included in their rent are the utilities, the trash access. We also provide a security system for access, a waiting area, and onsite restrooms and laundry. This gives a little bit more detailed view of where we're located, so we're right between the Burlington Coat Factory and where the old Bed Bath &amp; Beyond used to be. And then, as you can see, we have a huge parking lot out front for our clients and beauty professionals. This is a layout of our space, so this shows all 30 suites and the furniture that comes with them. Each suite has a sink and a lockable sliding door, lighting, and LVT floors. On the lower right, you'll see the entryway for the lobby. That's where clients enter and call their beauty professional in order to access the space. And then, in the back, is the bathrooms and the laundry room. And, let's open that one. So I'm here to request that the permit that's currently in place for a tattoo shop be allowed to be transferred to the new owner once the sale happens. I was granted this permit earlier in March of 2025, and we would just like it to be transferred to the new owner. We currently have two suites that are tattoo businesses, and they are very successful, and we would like to keep them around. Having tattoo as an option for us improves our business because it gives us more options for people to lease suites to, and it also supports tattoo entrepreneurs in the area. Also, having our business be busier increases the foot traffic for our neighbors, so they like that, and transferring the tattoo permit into Paul's name would not change anything on the exterior of our building. So the next few slides just show pictures of the business, so you can get an idea of what it looks like. This is our exterior. You can see our front doors with our sign and our window line there. Pictures of our common areas, so the upper left shows our waiting area, along with, in the upper middle is our, that's our security system, so our call box is where clients enter and they can call the suite that they're there to see in order to be allowed entry. And there's a picture of our hallways and our bathrooms, and then we also provide onsite laundry for our members. This is what the interior of one of our suites looks like. This was a suite that's been converted to non-hair by removing the shampoo bowl and the chairs, so it's the type of suite that a tattoo artist would get, and you can see the lockable sliding door and the lighting and the storage cabinets and sink that are provided. That is all I have for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Peg?
This question is for staff. I am wondering about, the current owner is Ms. Ulmer, and she currently has a permit for tattoo and body piercing at this site, correct? Okay, and these aren't transferable, so if we grant this, are we granting this to Mr...was it Harlow?
That's me.
Sorry.
Mr. Bossinger.
Bossinger. Is that, are we granting that?
Yes.
To him?
Yes, so he'll be the new owner of the business, so there'll be an SUP for that business in his name.
Okay.
So that's the thing, it just, you can't transfer it to new owners.
Cool.
You got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? I should ask if there's been any emails or voicemails.
No emails and no voicemails.
Thank you.
And no one has signed up to speak.
Oh, okay, I couldn't tell what she was saying. Okay, so no one has signed up to speak? Okay, at this time, is there anyone who would like to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, there are none, so I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and we can have discussion, or someone can put a motion before the commission. Vice Chair Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the planning commission to approve a special use permit for a Tattoo/Body Piercing Parlor within the existing business, My Salon Suite, to operate in the West Glen subdivision, subject to the rules and requirements of Section 11-4-8 of the Westminster Municipal Code and all other applicable city codes and regulations.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Dunn? Okay, Commissioner Dunn has seconded, and I believe this is a roll call if there's no discussion?
I do have one question, perhaps for our attorney, Mr. Graham. The special use permit, as it exists now, is for Ms. Ulmer. There, as it sounds like, as is usually the case, there is a process involved in acquiring the business. Closing will happen at some point in the future. If that doesn't happen, I'm not trying to suggest that it won't, but I always think of the worst-case scenario. If that doesn't happen, have we just canceled her permit by approving this one, and so it puts them in limbo, or how will that work?
That is an excellent question, and I'm not sure, I'm looking at staff, I'm not sure the code addresses that particular scenario. My view would be, if the code does not address that particular scenario, all we are actually doing here is granting the new applicant an application. If it doesn't close, then that application and that grant would be null and void, and the existing SUP would continue to operate.
So not having been an owner in that case, this permit couldn't take effect until he becomes...
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, in that case, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Colling?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Chair Bosher?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Peg?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. Thank you to staff and to the applicant for your presentation. Okay, we're moving on to item 3B, the...
Just want to...
Let me get to that.
Sorry, so we had Nathan Lawrence was going to be presenting this evening, but he's out, so, oh, Jacob Kaza will be presenting in his place.
Okay, great. All right, Jacob, do you want to go ahead and do the presentation on item 3B, please?
I would love to, thank you, Chairperson Bosher. Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Jacob Kaza, principal planner with the city's planning division. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, and public notices are hereby entered into the public record. The notices, excuse me, the notices of the public hearing were mailed to all property owners, tenants, and HOAs within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. Five pairs of public notification signs were posted on the subject property, both in English and Spanish. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. This project is proposed on the existing Walmart site located at 200 West 136th Avenue on the southwest corner of I-25 and West 136th Avenue. The cell site is proposed to be installed on the south side of the property behind the existing building. The proposal includes a 35-foot by 65-foot walled area containing mechanical equipment in addition to a 155-foot tall monopole. The proposed location is a landscaped area to the south and rear of the Walmart, adjacent to the rear access drive used primarily for loading purposes. To accommodate the cell site, a portion of the landscaped area would be removed and a retaining wall constructed into the existing slope. A masonry wall matching the existing Walmart building will screen the mechanical equipment, and landscaping would be planted around the perimeter of the cell site. Section 11-514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing a preliminary development plan amendment. Staff finds that the preliminary development plan amendment generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend that city council approve the preliminary development plan amendment. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priorities of community empowerment and engagement and economic vitality through the provision of enhanced cellular community technology, which will enable enhanced resident and business communication. Thank you very much for your attention. There are several staff members with us this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Hi, how's it going? I'm Jacob Hamilton, I'm here to do the presentation on the cellular facility. I pretty much am regurgitating what Jacob had already talked about, but we have the project, as he noticed, on the south side of Walmart. I have been back here quite a few times, and there's a little slope behind the Walmart there, and the retaining wall, I believe, is built into that slope partially. You can't see it from the front of the Walmart, can't see it from I-25 or the on-ramp really, because there's a pretty large-sized landscaping buffer between the I-25 here, and I believe that's to the, to the west of the Walmart parking lot. Oh, sorry. Do you know how to go back? Oh, there we go, I got it. Okay. So again, here's a little bit more of a close-up. Right here, this is the red pen that indicates where the tower would be located. The equipment area would be around that in kind of a rectangular fashion. This is the trail area that he was referring to, that we had to add, I believe, easement language in order to dedicate some of that land to the trail. Over here is that I-25, I believe it's an on-ramp from up here, I forget the name of that street offhand, the address, so that would be, what, 36th? 36th, yeah, so off of 36th is the on-ramp for I-25, and then this is behind the building entirely, so you can't see the base of it from 36th. And access is from the side of the building around back. This is a photo simulation of the tower, so we have these from quite a few angles. There's other photo simulations also in a configuration, kind of a 3D sketch that was done also, but this gives an angle if you're standing, if I was back here, basically right over here, in this general direction. If you were looking at the tower, this is what it would look like, and that's a screen wall in front of the antennas, that's kind of a version of stealthing that basically makes it so you can't see the individual antennas, and it provides some stealthing just to break up some of the equipment view. Otherwise, you can see the individual pipe mounts, the RUs, not a big deal either, particularly from 150 feet in the air, that's usually what we do, but the city had asked that we provide some stealthing, and that's what we proposed. provide some stealthing, and that's what we proposed. We did look at perhaps doing a tree or something else, but it just was really out of scale. It would have been not a tree. It would have been something resembling a tree, that's much taller than any tree in the area. So this seemed to be the, what we tried to do is reduce the bulk and scale essentially as much as humanly possible, so that it just takes up less space in the sky essentially, as little as it needs to. And I think in the drawing, it showed two RAD centers. RAD center being the middle of a proposed antenna configuration. So this RAD center, I believe, is 150 feet top of the pole. There was a future co-locator, which is a carrier of the future, but they're not there yet. I think the city just asked us to put that there in the drawing. Right now, it's Verizon. So Verizon is proposed, and they are the ones locating, I mean, as a company, SBA, which is who I represent, as noted here in the applicant, we want as many carriers as possible. That's the entire business model. We want T-Mobile, we want AT&amp;T, Dish, RIP. So no Dish, but we want the other, at least the big three, and anybody else who would be providing communication. So, but right, as of right now, and the way that it will be built, is just with Verizon. This is the coverage map, straight from Verizon, that shows pre, when I say pre, I mean pre-tower, so what it is now. And the green is good outdoor, that's basically, if you're outside, how well your cellphone works. The cell signal's going to degrade as you go indoors, just general physics, as you go through objects, it's going to reduce the signal. And so your yellow is fair, and now if you're in green, you're still getting fair, of course. It's just showing that, in the blue, purple, this is the poor coverage. So you can tell there's these pockets in here that are in need of coverage pretty bad. And we have heard from the community, there's definitely a lack of coverage in this area. So, going to the next slide. Yeah, just really, for purposes of the coverage map, it doesn't show a real dramatic change, but it is. It infills this entire area, so what you're not seeing is poor green coverage to good green coverage. I mean, you can see that it blankets the area and does provide coverage, but it's also filling in all of these outside areas closer to these existing cell towers, is also offloading a lot of that. So a lot of the issues you'll get with coverage is, in I-25, obviously, in the morning time and in the evening time, you're going to see a massive increase in usage on those freeways, and that's when the cell towers that are essentially offloading the freeway traffic will get maxed out. And then when people get home, 7, 8 o'clock, it turns to the residential area. And so those residential areas will tend to get more use. So this tower, by being in this location, it still offloads a lot of these other towers that you see, and when I say other, these other, I don't even know what you'd call these, it's basically three or four triangles, I would call them arrays, but this just indicates that there's another macro site. And this offloads those as well. So it's providing new coverage and filling in areas, but it's also, just as importantly, particularly now, since we have a lot of actual, what we would consider, coverage, a lot of these towers are capacity. They're based on increasing capacity, 5G streaming, all of the stuff that we're doing on our phones. And this is kind of just an aerial overlay, same thing, and we'll get a closer view. So this is your closer view, the base of the tower, some of the trees that need to be removed. These are small trees that are being removed, and then there's also trees that are being added. You can see the addition, subtraction, and again, these are pretty low-lying trees, but then we also have the addition of, I forget what the actual Latin term is for the trees that are being installed, but they match the existing trees, and there's some low-lying pines, basically, that are native to this part of Colorado. And when they're mature, they'll cover all of the wall and at least the bottom of the tower. That's, that's the goal. And this is also, same thing, basically a summary of which trees have been removed, which trees are being placed, what the size of the lease area is, and how one would access the site. And there's not any additional access, there's already access to that, that side of Walmart. These don't require, once they're up and operating, there are maybe a couple times a month, is someone accessing them. They're truly unmanned facilities, once they're built. Elevation drawing here, as the note says, is structurally designed for up to four carriers. We would love that, of course, but right now, it's just Verizon, so you know, you're seeing the outline of future carriers. Right now, it's just Verizon. This would be one of the simulations also, this is before, and you can see in the key here where it's being taken from. There's the tower, same with this, you can see where the photo is being taken from, and there's the tower. And that's why we go with that light gray look, because it tends to blend into the sky the best, in our, you know, 30, 40 years of building these. And lastly, this is from the Walmart over here, similar to the one that we saw before, if not the exact same one, it is the exact same one, but same angle, a little bit more close-up of it. And then this was kind of the 3D configuration that we did, it's basically a bird's-eye view. Shows you some of the trees that are going and some that are going to be replacing it. And then you can see the, we'll obviously have some equipment inside that area, in that block wall, but, you know, it's not showing anything in there for purposes of this sketch. And that's it. And I'm here to answer questions.
I have a quick question for you. When do you anticipate putting this into service?
Well, for us, it's as soon as humanly possible. We're looking at this, we have this hearing, then I believe there's a month for the ODP, is it in a month time, something like that?
City Council here.
City Council, sorry. So, City Council, and then Appeal period, and then it's building permit. Sorry, I'm walking you through it, you didn't necessarily ask for that, but I'm doing it my way.
Oh, that's okay, that's good.
So that gives us about two months, and then probably about 60 days for the building permit.
Okay.
So, you know, rose-colored glasses, I would say four months. In reality, probably six months.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
We are, we are looking to build it, though. This is not a speculative venture, there's, Verizon is ready to build.
Okay. Commissioner Calling?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. The, you said you can co-locate four other devices on this tower, so Verizon and four others?
Three others.
Three others, so four altogether.
You could do more than that, if you needed to, you'd have to do a structural upgrade of some kind, perhaps a tower swap, but in all likelihood, there could be just something you could do to the foundation. But it's designed right now for Verizon, and then three other similar-sized carriers, so basically the big ones. It's designed, if AT&amp;T and T-Mobile also wanted to add on, and there's really not anyone else that would have the structural loading at this point, that it would be, need to be designed for. And the more loading you design it for, it does affect the width and the size and bulk and scale, so there's a balance there of, obviously not wanting to swap the tower in the future, but having enough structural capacity for any reasonable future carriers that we think might want to come on.
So I think the answer to my question I was going to ask, if you had future, would you put another pole out there, or would you upgrade this particular pole?
Yeah, for us, that costs too. I mean, obviously aesthetics would not be ideal either, but the cost of putting another pole, plus then you have, when you have that horizontal, sharing horizontal space, you can have interference. It's better to have them stacked vertically.
Got it. Is it, is that a direct burial pole, or has it got a foundation?
They do a foundation, they do caissons, they basically have four giant piers that are caissons, that are concrete caissons, that, they do a geotech report of the soil, and the soil kind of determines what this, what the foundation is.
The structural.
We have somewhat of a rocky soil here, which is good for the foundation, because you essentially go down, if you're in a sandy environment out on the coast, you need spread foundations that are, pretty much mimic a oak tree, you know, that have really big tentacles that reach out far, and you're going to have to increase your lease area, but we don't have to do anything like that here, to my knowledge.
Okay, and then my last question is, this is on Walmart's property. I mean, obviously, there must be some kind of a negotiation between you and Walmart. Is there any benefit for them from a technical standpoint? Does it help provide, improve their service or anything, or is it just really?
Yeah, it'll help their customers, people that are shopping at Walmart. To be honest with you, when you're dealing with a company like Walmart of that size, you're kind of a flea to them, you know? Now, I don't mean that in a bad way, they're just the scope and size, so for them, we are a small customer, you know, we don't occupy a ton of their headspace, they've got bigger problems, but it does help their customers, and they do consider that. That's why they have a master agreement with SBA, which is the tower company we're representing, which is one of the big tower companies, and they have a master lease agreement, which is essentially predetermined, not always rent, but at least the terms are predetermined, so that you can do it, and it doesn't take years to get done. There's already a standard template. So for a company like SBA, we want to work with companies that we have these agreements with, and Walmart is one of them.
Okay, that was my other question. So you tend to locate some of your towers, SBA locates your towers on Walmart properties? It's pretty common?
It is pretty common. Like I said, it can be difficult due to the size of the company, so it may not be necessarily number one where they, where they locate. I mean, perhaps it is in this area, but generally speaking, this, it's needed here, though, so they're in this area, I'm not saying they're the only game in town, but there wasn't a whole lot of land here to choose from, and they're in a good spot to provide the coverage that we need for the area. So it kind of worked out.
I have one last question. Do you have, get complaints from surrounding property owners for this kind of a tower? And if you do, what are those complaints like? What do people complain about?
Usually, it's radio emissions. If you're going to have people complain, it's usually, it would generally show up and comment to a form just like this, if it was a, if it was a big deal. This is pretty well-placed in a commercial area, so, you know, oftentimes, we're in close proximity to residential, just because that's where the people are, is kind of where the signal needs to be. But this one is, is commercial, it's surrounded interstate, the planned development area of Walmart. There is homes, but they're pretty far away. So that tends to decrease the opposition, generally speaking.
So I'm surprised it's radio waves, I would have thought it would have been visual impairment, they don't care about that?
Depends where you're at.
Yeah.
That's very highly dependent on the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
So you would think so. I would, but I'm biased, just, you know, I wouldn't think...
You probably think they're pretty, huh?
Well, I'm not able to accurately judge them.
As long as it doesn't look like a tree.
Right. Well, a tree can be good too, in the right spot, but it can be really silly too.
Yes. This would be a silly one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hamilton, just a quick question. I'm just wondering, when you, when you build a tower, do you do it with commitments from carriers usually, or do you acquire those as you go along?
No, it's definitely carrier-driven. They're not, particularly big companies like this, they're not into the speculation market very much. There are smaller tower companies that would be more inclined to not build at risk necessarily, but build with a good hunch that they're going to get a carrier, but SBA has to have an, an agreement in place. They have to have a firm commitment from a carrier for them to pursue one of these locations.
Got you. And you have one from?
Verizon.
Verizon.
Yeah, we prefer multiple, that's, the business model, I wouldn't say it's reliant on co-locators, but that's the goal. The goal is to get multiple tenants, because that's how, you know, as a business, you make money, if you're increasing your revenue on that same cost, that's what you want to do. But having one committed carrier, if there's a good coverage need, then hopefully, there's a coverage need for other carriers also.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for staff. I see this pole's going to be 155 feet tall. We had a, an application a few months ago for a flagpole that was 40 feet tall, and the general area of this, a little bit farther north, about a mile north, that, that was recommended for denial, and this is recommended for approval. I think this makes, I mean, I think the project makes sense, but can you kind of explain why the situation is different than that flagpole situation that we dealt with? Please?
Yes, of course, Vice Chair Carpenter. So for the flagpole itself, so that was reviewed as a sign variance, a flag is considered a sign under the city's sign code, so it's subject to separate regulations and rules than a telecommunications device would be. So for the telecommunications device itself, the reason why we're recommending support of this is, we have received numerous complaints and concerns from the neighbor, from the community about this area and the lack of coverage. Specifically, our police and fire department are citing that people get into accidents on I-25, and then they're not able to call 911 for help. Apparently, this happens quite frequently on the corridor, and so this is one where the city's actually been active in trying to pursue the cell, cell phone companies to getting a tower here. So part of our conditions of approval for them, that we have placed into the PDP and ODP, is they actually have to keep this tower able to co-locate additional carriers on. So we're actually mandating that they, that they not make it an exclusive tower, and of course, that works well with their business model, and that they want to have multiple carriers. But we don't, because it's not a sign, and they won't be allowed to put any signage on the pole, it's not the same thing as a flagpole, in the city's eyes.
Okay, great, thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yeah, if I remember on that flagpole, it wasn't the pole as much as, they wanted a flag that was larger than what was allowed, and they wouldn't consider a smaller one. I think that's what I recollect.
Correct, Commissioner. So they, it was two separate variances that they were requesting, one was to increase the height, I believe, by five feet, and then the other was to increase the size for that flag, I think, it was like 48 to 60, or something like that, so it was a kind of a nominal amount, and that will, application will be coming back, by the way.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the public testimony portion of this hearing. Did we have any voicemails or emails?
No voicemails and no emails, and we don't have any speakers sign up to speak.
So I will ask one last time, is there anyone who did not sign up that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and invite discussion or a motion on this application. Commissioner Peg?
I move that the planning commission recommend City Council approve the third amended preliminary development plan for Interchange Business Center filing number one. This recommendation is based on a finding that the preliminary development plan is supported by the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-14 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Commissioner Mayo?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Can you go ahead and do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Calling?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayo?
Yes.
Chair Bosscher?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Peg?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your presentations, both the applicant and staff. Do we have any old business? Any miscellaneous business? Okay, looks like there's nothing further to discuss, so I'm going to call this meeting closed at 7:43 PM. Thank you all.